Appeals.
Allison.
The date of the meeting is 7/29/2020. The purpose of the meeting is to hear, decide application before the zoning board of appeals which have been brought pursuant to the zoning bylaws of the town of Howard's and Massachusetts zoning established act. Recorded and tape notification. As required by law, the town may audio, video, record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. It's apparently me.
I don't even know how to record it. Oh, Nick.
Somebody's audio is not off. Great, thank you.
What I will do now is I will announce the members of the board that have audio, starting with Brian.
Is it Ms. Caneely?
It's only coming on this as long as you can hear it. I can hear most of what they're saying.
I'm Alexander Donahue.
They can isolate us.
Jamie, can you hear me?
I can.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, I'm James Armstrong.
Chris?
Chris Murphy.
Okay, now Shayla Delaney.
First case. All right, the first case is Thomas, it's 2020-21. Thomas and Ann Shipman have applied for special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's 325-54, Table 2. Area regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 20 Bayberry Road, MAP 24, Parcel 6L-5 in the RR zoning district. We have a representative from... The Shipmans?
Yep, Ann and Ann Shipman.
Okay. I just want to take a moment. Thank you very much for having a house number out. All right, would you present to the board what it is you would like to do with your property?
Yeah, we're looking to do is we're looking to actually remove the house where it is now.
You speak up and into your microphone, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now any better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking to actually take the house and remove it. I was originally going to build a house on the footprint that was there before, and I went in front of the zoning board a little while back, and we were approved to actually take the house down on the first floor deck. And we're going to build off of that and expand the house. After it was approved, I found out that the footing of the house was only down a foot and a half. I went back to the building department, and he told me go back to the drawing board, and I gotta go back to the whole thing on the plans and the foundation and all. So what we did going forward, we actually shifted the house over a little bit. We made it a little more conforming. Took it over from the left and branded more to the right, and we made the house, we tried to make the house as much as we could to make it a little more conforming than where it was. So we're going, we're back to where we were going. It was going to be a new house before, but we were going to stay on the first floor grace and go up. Now we're going to put a new foundation, build a whole new house, and we moved it a little bit to make it more conforming now.
All right. All right, what I'll do is I'll throw it open to the board, starting with Brian. Do you have any comments, Brian, with regard to it?
Thank you, and good evening, folks. So the new foundation is not going on the exact footprint that the old foundation was on. You've changed the location a little bit, is that correct?
Yes.
And when you went through the board the last time, and I'm a new member, I've only been on a few months, was the approval done of the existing construction, including how the first and second floor were being constructed?
Yes, it was.
Okay. This one is, I got an email, a letter from the health department indicating they have concerns regarding your lounge space on the second floor. I realize that's a building inspectors requirement, but is that going to be addressed by you folks?
Yeah, what we did is we, as soon as we got the letter from the apartment, we reached out to Rocket Tech, and we have no way to do that. So she drew up a new plan for the second floor, showing that lot, what we call a loft now, they're going to put actually a handrail going right across, so that whole room will be open to the stairway. And it's going to be a banister there.
Yes. All right, well, thank you. And I agree with Al, it was nice seeing a house number so we can find a house, so thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm all set, Al.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Murphy?
Beyond what Brian just asked, really, I have no further questions.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions.
All right, I remember the propping from last time I visited it, and I feel as though the denial is faced upon the setbacks.
Yes.
And there are, it's a pre-existing nonconformity. And are you making a new non-conforming piece of property now with your addition? Are you expanding the nonconformity?
We're reducing the nonconformity.
Presently, the home that's existing does not conform to the front setback and the left side setback. The new home that we're proposing does conform to the left side setback, so our left side is now conforming, and the front setback, I think it remains as it had been. So basically, what we did was we shifted the home to the right, so both the left and the right are conforming, but the front, I believe, is unchanged.
Um, I don't have any further questions for the petitioner.
Al, I'm back.
Any comments?
Oh, hear me?
Okay.
Dave, we can hear you.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Dave, we can hear you.
Okay. We'll talk about what happened later on. Yeah, I didn't hear some of the testimony, but certainly I looked at the plans and looked at the property, and they're simply facing an existing nonconformity, and I think the proposal meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gail case. We would need to have that construction condition, given the location, which would be no demolition or substantial exterior, substantial new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year, just because it's such a tight road. So that's why I have to say, thank you, Al.
So the age between June 30 and Labor Day, no construction?
What he is saying is...
I couldn't hear him.
What I'm saying is you would not be permitted to do any demolition?
What he was saying was that... You cannot do any demolition between Memorial Day and Labor Day, 2020, 2021. They may be part of the narrowest, no period.
So if we're understanding you correctly, we couldn't start construction on the home, any demolition until after Labor Day of 2020?
That's only if, you know, all of your equipment, if your contractors are able to get their vehicles onto your property and not park on the roadway, you're good to go.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right. I'd like to have a, anybody got any further discussion on this matter? I'll take that as a no.
Without any public commentary, because I had a note from somebody who said she might...
I'm sorry, Shayla, I didn't see anything on that. All right, is there anybody out there who has a comment regarding this piece of property?
Hi, my name's Erica Goodman, I am actually in the butter about property.
Call Tom, ask her if we're supposed to be able to see ourselves on that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to know roughly how large is the house going today?
The home is 1,173 square feet.
It's currently almost 600 square feet.
And then just, do you have a plan to add some landscaping back to the property?
We presently don't have a formal plan. Our intent would be, you know, once the construction is complete, to put something that is, you know, compatible with the surrounding homes and the landscaping. Our intent is to make it look landscaping.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other neighbors out there, other interested parties with regard to this property, that they have a comment? Without hearing a response, I'll take that as a no. At this time, I'd like to have the members of the board vote with regard to this property.
Now we need to close the public hearing.
You're going to now, I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Okay.
A second.
A second.
Who was that?
I did it. Yeah, Chris Murphy. All in favor to close the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Al.
All right, the ZBA approves the application in the case of 2020-21. For a... All right, for the building permit application. I'm sorry, this is a special permit, the permit is being approved. For, and I will read it, Thomas and Ann Shipman Board grants a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's 325-54, Table 2. Area regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 20 Bayberry Road, MAP 24, Parcel KL-5 in the RR zoning district.
Mr. Donahue, is that a motion?
And we need to add the condition, though, to that motion, Al.
Okay. The condition is with regard to no construction vehicles on the street during the period of May 2000, excuse me, Memorial Day and Labor Day of 2021. And the vehicles will be, will have replaced upon the property in order to keep the road with access.
Mr. Brier, I think I saw you speaking, but I didn't hear you. What did you say?
I think he was making a motion.
It was second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, congratulations, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. It'll be a nice bit over there.
Have a good night.
Good night, Al.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Good night, Dan, thank you.
Bye-bye, Tom and Ann.
Hey, you want Dave? You want me to take over as chair, or you want to run the meeting, Al? I don't care.
No, I'm going to let you take all the days. You do a pretty good job.
You're going to be the acting clerk, so you go ahead and call our next case, please.
All right, case number 2020-22.
I'm trying to get out, I don't...
Richard Centrella of Richie's Garage has applied for special permit to change the use in order to operate a small general auto repair shop. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's Table 325, Howard's Table 325, Section 1. Use regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located 191 Queen Anne Road, MAP 58, Parcel F1, in LL zoning district.
Just before the applicant presents the case, I need to say with respect to the prior case, case 2020-21, in lieu of the pandemic restrictions on the town hall, I hereby authorize our secretary, Shayla Delaney, to stamp in the documents and the plans and to sign the decision when it's ready, on behalf of the chair and the board. Thank you. Okay, applicant, Mr. Richard Centrella, are you here?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't see you, but we can hear you, so go ahead and...
I don't know how to get my camera to work appropriately, but as long as you can hear me, I can see you.
Yeah, well, you can see me but not hear me, so now we're...
We'll figure it all out.
Improvement, but why don't you go ahead and present your petition, sir?
Okay, well, I have my repair shop at 195 Queen Anne Road, and I would like to move to 191. These two buildings face each other, so I'm basically moving across the parking lot and into the next driveway. And so I have a permit for used cars, and I have a permit for my general repairs, and I'd like to end that at 195 and either move it or start anew at 191. I have been, I've had these permits now for three or four years, I've never done anything to violate my conditions of the permits. The property that I'm at now has just become too congested and too crowded, and it is suffering, it's making my business suffer. Some of my customers' cars have been bumped into, my own personal antique car has been bumped into, and the rent has been raised about 40% in the last month or so. So it's an issue of crowding on that lot and not being able to get access to it certain hours of the day. I can't even get into my own driveway down there. So I was lucky enough to find an empty bay in the building next door, and I provided the plan there, so you can see that there are parking spaces for eight cars. I don't think I'll need them all, but that's much, much more than what I have now, and I think it's a much quieter lot over there, and I think I'd be better off in that spot. So the only people that face me is the Drywall Masonry Supply Company there, and there's no residence around or anything like that. I think it's a fairly simple thing, I hope you'll agree. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Donahue? You got to unmute, Al.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
I have no questions either.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
I have a few questions. Have you actually moved over there and started work on that new property, at the new property?
No, I have had that property, I've been renting that property for about three months, and I just have used it as a dropping off place. Actually, I have my antique truck parked inside the building there. I just don't want it to get damaged again, so I've used, I have it over there. I'm still doing business at 195 pending your approval.
And the, what did you say, the conditions of the permit, what are those?
Well, when I applied for my permit at 195, I had specified that I would provide enough parking spaces for the used cars and for the business, and they were numbered and they were in my lease. And the property has changed hands, and the new landlord has eliminated all those parking spaces and given me two instead of the seven or eight that I had. So in order to stay at 195, I am in violation of the promise I made originally to keep enough parking spaces to conduct my business out of. So at 191 Queen Anne, I have enough room for eight automobiles. Now, I don't run a used car lot, I run a used car brokerage, I only sell one car at a time, but now I have eight dedicated spaces that are outlined on the plan there. And initially, at the original location, I didn't have eight, I only had seven. So I end up with a little bit more space, a little bit less rent, and I'm still staying in the same neighborhood, and I've done the best I could just to be, you know, a good neighbor in that area. I can also add that the fire department inspects me twice a year, and I'm in compliance with them. And it's just too congested there. There's a used car lot out front that's just, you know, he holds 15 or 20 cars there every week, and you just can't get in or out of a lot. There's not enough room for both of us, is basically what it comes down to.
The reason I ask is when I drove by, they'd look at the property, it looked like there was someone working in that unit, changing oil actually, on a commercial vehicle, and I was just curious whether you had started working there yet.
No, I have not done any work over there. There are other mechanics in that building, and there's a towing company that operates out of that building. So did you look at bay nine, or did you just look at the building?
It was bay nine, yes.
Okay, I parked the blue swimming pool truck there yesterday because I didn't have any room for it in my place, the day before yesterday.
Right.
Is that the truck you're talking about? Yeah, I just had no place to park it. Yeah, I just had no place to park it in my place.
I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Okay, I think this applicant meets the requirements for a special permit for this use under 325-51, which says that we can grant it as long as that the use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I don't believe it will, he's operating on the other side of the street, it's a commercial industrial area out there. The specific site's an appropriate location for such a use, which I think it certainly is, again, commercial area. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard because of the proposed use, and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the operation of the proposed use. The applicant has already made that determination from a business standpoint, and he will be subject to all the normal town rules on waste disposal. So I believe the applicant has met the requirements, I have no questions. Is there anyone out in the public who would like to comment on this application? No hearing, no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Donahue, a second, please.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Armstrong, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Look here, opposed. A public hearing is closed. Any discussion by the board? As I said, I've already indicated why I think the applicant meets the requirements under 325-51 for a special permit.
When the applicant was in last time, I think he abided by the conditions on the property in which he's leaving now, so I have no problem with his petition.
Okay. I will move in case 20-22, Richard Centrella of Richie's Garage granted a special permit to change the use in order to operate a small general auto repair shop. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's, Section 321, I'm sorry, Section 325, Table 1, Use Regulations, Set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. Property is located at 191 Queen Anne Road, MAP 58, Parcel F1 in the IL zoning district. We have a second, a motion.
A second.
Mr. Sullivan, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
No.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Granted, Mr. Centrella, you have your special permit. Good luck on your new location.
Thank you, thank you all. Have a great evening. Good luck.
Thank you also, sir. Okay, you know what, let's vote with our hands, because it's hard to get the audio here. Okay, Mr. Donahue, you can call our next, I think we have that eminent baseball, I, Attorney Kroll here, that was a good article, I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Very good. A lot of history, Attorney Kroll.
Lot of fun, and the only regret is that I'm now 50 years older.
Well, I just, I hope you didn't play baseball with a soup and pie, that's all I'd say.
I did not.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, if you could call our case, please, sir.
All right, case number 2020-23, Patrick D. O'Connor and Dorothy O'Connor, through their agent, attorney William Kroll, have applied for special permit or, in the alternative, a variance to demolish and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's 325, Table 2, Area Regulation 325-54, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 23, excuse me, 12 Earl Terrace, MAP 12, Parcel N1-29 in the RH-1 zoning district.
Okay, before you go on, Attorney Kroll, I'm sorry, once again, I need to say that in the prior case, 2020-22, I authorized Ms. Delaney to stamp the documents and to sign the decision on behalf of the board. Okay, thank you, Attorney Kroll, if you could present your petition, please.
Thank you, Attorney William Kroll from Howard's Court, representing the petitioners Dorothy and Patrick O'Connor, regarding... Dorothy and Patrick O'Connor, regarding the property at 12 Earl Terrace. You're stuck with me for the next four petitions. Interestingly enough, they all revolve around Lower County Road in West Howard, that I think is two north of Lower County and two south of Lower County. So they're all kind of in the same area. On this petition, as you can see from the plans, it's, the petitioners are seeking to demolish and replace the existing single-family non-conforming residential dwelling as per the existing conditions plan by Moran Engineering and the proposed conditions plan by Moran, as well as the building and elevation plans by Zibrat and McCarthy. Now, you can see that the house, the new house would be a little bit bigger, squared off, and moved closer to Earl Terrace. But right now, the current house is 60, a little over 60 feet from Earl Terrace. The new house would be 39.5 feet from Earl Terrace. So still well more than the 25 feet from the road that they have to be. The side setbacks would basically remain the same at 8.2, one of them's going down a tenth of a foot from 8.3 to 8.2, which is intensifying a non-conformity. And then if you, if you can, let me preface it by saying, my clients own the lot in question where the house is located, but they also own the lot to the rear and the south. There's a larger lot to the rear in the south, as well as the lot to the north. So you can, I colored that in in yellow on the assessors map that was part of your petition. But the point is, and as you can see from the Moran plan, that they own significant area to the rear of the lot where they want to demolish and replace. So even though they're increasing the site coverage from 38.5%, which is already non-conforming, the maximum is 35%, they're seeking to increase it to 52.2% on that one lot. If you consider the other lots together as a whole, or at least the lot right behind them that extends southerly, that site coverage goes down significantly. The Board of Health wants them to, wants Mr. Kroto, who's here with us tonight from Moran Engineering, to probably do what's called an 81X plan to show that those two lots are in common ownership, to keep the Board of Health happy for this new septic system that he shows on the plan. But as far as this board is concerned, yes, that's an increase in the non-conforming site coverage percentage. But if you look at that lot as a whole, it certainly would keep it well below the 35% maximum. As far as the request is concerned, we're asking for a special permit to demolish and replace, make the footprint a little bit bigger for the new house, come a tenth of a foot closer, and increase the already non-conforming site coverage. And under the Gale case, if you're intensifying, as you know, an existing non-conformity, you can do so with a special permit from this board, as long as the board finds that there will not be a substantial increase, or I'm sorry, a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. So that my clients contend this evening that the new dwelling would not constitute a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, and the like. And it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. And would ask that the board grant the relief for a special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, do you have any comments, questions? Chris Murphy?
I don't have any questions.
Did you call somebody?
Brian?
Two questions, and again, Bill, as everyone else enjoyed your article.
Thank you.
So I guess I need to get a little education. You got to school me a little bit here. The two real lots, are they non-conforming lots? Do they have frontage on the street, like Dublin Lane?
They do not have, they do not have frontage on the street, no. But they're owned by petitioners.
I realize that. Now, why have that one area, those two lots, that's over 2,000 square feet of space of land? Where the septic system is not on the same lot as the house being built, or to be demolished and built? Why aren't these lots being combined with the main lot? And never told the situation except with a common, a common, you know, for housing, group housing, that the septic system was proved on a lot, that, on a separate lot, that wasn't combined in. So.
That's, if I may, and that's a, really a Board of Health issue as opposed to a zoning issue. The Board of Health has indicated, and they've sent in a response to petition the chairman has, saying that they would either want a perimeter plan to combine the lots, or an 81X plan that shows the two lots, or the three lots, as being in common ownership. And Mr. Kroto could speak to that further, but he has talked with Megan Eldridge, the health agent, about this in the past, and she's happy with that. Right, Dan?
That lot there with the septic system cannot be sold off separately.
The septic system could not be sold off separately, no. It has to be.
That lot there cannot be sold off separately, is what I'm asking.
You could not separate the septic system from the house that it services, no.
That was before we went.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan?
I was trying to learn here a little bit. Could that lot with the septic system is on, could that be in the future be sold off to somebody else with an easement to keep the septic system there?
No, because the septic system has to be on property owned by the petitioner.
That's fine. All right, so it's sold out. All right. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got to mute themselves there.
All right. Maybe it's me.
Al, have anything? Al Donahue?
I muted. That's not me.
Amy?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, the only question I have, and I mean, it's really not pertinent, but I noticed the shed on the easterly side, that first shed appears to go off the lot line. Do they own that lot it goes onto too, Attorney Croll?
Yes.
Okay, so that's their lot also?
The one to the north they own also.
Okay. Are they going to merge these lots?
That's the idea that we were just talking about, with this 81X plan. They're at least going to merge the lot that's directly behind the house and then extend southerly.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to?
Actually, one last question. I apologize. The question that that shed is encroaching on April Street.
Sorry, say it again.
The shed is actually owned by Earl, and it's encroaching onto our client's property. So they're, yeah, AID is using part of our client's property for their shed, but our client has not made an issue of it yet.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Yes, that extends.
Right, that's not a small encroachment by us. It's a larger encroachment by them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, anybody in the public like to speak to this petition?
Yes, this is Aunt Lauren, and this is my aunt Ann Caneli at number six Earl Terrace. And I'm kind of curious about whether you're talking about her shed, which is located at six Earl Terrace, not eight. Okay, well, we also requested, can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, so we requested an opportunity to view the plans prior to this meeting, but we never heard back from the town of Howard. And I requested it at least twice, so we haven't had a chance to look at the plans. But Ann Caneli lives at six Earl Terrace. That's why I'm asking about the shed. But I guess we can figure that out later.
I think that is, if I may, that is six, not eight, according to the assessment that shed is on six.
So you mentioned that, and this is for Attorney Croll, I think, the question. You mentioned that the other lots, if you consider the other lots, then the percentage of the dwelling is less than the 52%. But what are the plans for the other properties? Because eventually, if there's going to be a plan to build on the other properties, then this particular dwelling would be, you know, to consider those other properties that they're going to be built upon might not be appropriate.
Answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The only plans in front of the board this evening are plans to demolish and replace the existing house.
But within that plan, you're including the, in the percentage, you know, you mentioned that if you included the other lots, then the percentage would be a certain amount. Are those other lots buildable?
They are, if I may, they are not buildable because they don't have frontage on a road.
So is there an intent to fill the road so that they can be developed?
Well, I can't answer for intent. All I can answer is what's before the board this evening. But it would take, for example, to bring a road in, you would have to, as an example, buy your lot with your house on it and demolish that house and then bring a road in.
So is the house at six Earl Terrace the only house that's preventing the road from being built?
Well, Mr. and Mrs. O'Connor also own number 10 Earl Terrace between the house in question tonight and your house.
So would they be able to demolish that house? Like, it just sounds like with, if you have one owner for all those lots, then, then they potentially could build dwellings on the other lots. And to consider this square footage, those other lots for square footage purposes wouldn't be relevant at this point, even though there's no particular plan at this point. They could foreseeably be developed.
I don't see any way that they could be developed without variances through this board. There just isn't, they look large on this plan because all the lots on Earl Terrace are so small. But the lots themselves are 15,000 and 8,000, the two lots in back, which is way, just far under the current zoning of 40,000. So it would be, I think combining it with lots nearby would make them buildable as part of the other lot, but not as separate residences. That is my.
So if they combined the two lots that right now don't have frontage, and then with 10, which they currently own, then they may have 40,000. And then the house, the dwelling that they're planning to build, where, you know, there's one that's being demolished is going to happen, and then they're going to build this one you talked about earlier. The one that they're proposing, is it, it sounds like it's much bigger, but is it going to go up higher then? Is it gonna, I know the footprint sounds like it's not going to be too different, but is the?
It's going to be less than 30 feet, which is the maximum of any height for any lot in that zone. It'll be less than 30.
So that, is that two stories?
Traditionally.
I haven't seen the plan, only because of this virus. I haven't given them the opportunity to see the plan. Nobody's responded to our request, so.
The plans, the plans show what I call a one and a half cape, with, they have a second floor and some dormer on either end. But it's not two, it's not just a square, two full stories like a hotel on the Monopoly game. It's just a traditional one and a half cape. But going back to your concern, I agree with Mr. Kroto, the engineer, that.
Can you see it?
Yes, thank you. We can see that.
Yes. That's it.
Can we look at it again, just for a minute? Just, I'm sorry, can we look at that, Mr. Ryder, for just another little quick?
More available, you had looked at the agenda. They were available on through our cellar.
Yeah. Well, my aunt's 85 years old. We're doing the best we can here. Bye.
The front of it.
That's the front, okay.
Let me see, there we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's the front. And this would be what's called the left elevation.
That's where it was taken, with the dormer on either end.
It's a nice looking house, as you could see from the plan.
It's a nice looking house. It is different than the ones on the street for the most part, though.
That's the right elevation. And this is the rear elevation. Let me see if I can get it.
So it's a substantially bigger house than what most of the other homes on Earl Terrace are? It looks, it's, what's the square footage?
I would hesitate to characterize it as being totally different from the others. But regardless, this, the town and this board don't have the authority to regulate what the house looks like, or the size of it, because it's allowed, they're allowed to build that size house, as long as the septic system asking for it. It would read special permit that it's not a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood.
Okay, so the septic system is the right capacity for that?
Yes.
Well, the septic is on a different lot.
It's tied to this house. It's on the lot that they own, a lot that they own, it's tied to this house, cannot be sold separately.
Okay, so, and then.
And I will say that my clients and I explored the possibilities of putting these lots together, putting different houses, different locations, with me and Mr. Kroto. And this is what it came down to, is that that real lot just doesn't, because it doesn't have frontage and it's not large enough to create a 40,000 square foot lot, and it's cost prohibitive to buy somebody's house and tear it down just to bring a road in. This is what made the most sense. and it's cost prohibitive to buy somebody's house and tear it down just to bring a road in, um, this is what made the most sense.
Hey, anything further, Ms. Caneelli?
Do you have, um, do you have any other questions about this?
How many bedrooms?
Oh, how, well, I, she's asking how many bedrooms. I, I don't know if that's.
I believe it's a four bedroom house, looking at the septic design. Yep, three upstairs, one bedroom downstairs.
Um, just curious, this, with the, the, I guess eventually we're going to have, um, we're going to be tied to Townsor. Does that impact um, any of these decisions that are made by the town of Howard at this point?
Currently, as far as I understand, no, you'd be tied to the same amount of bedrooms. At East Howard, at least, they're, they're, you can't get more bedrooms by tying to the sewer, which is actually different than Chatham, but they have a certain amount of flow that can go to Chatham. It's based on the um, the, the bedrooms that the houses have now, so you can't add beyond the current regulations for the sewer.
Is that, is that the way it's going to be?
It's so new that, that I don't think we can dig, know what's going to happen when it gets to West Howard, um, but that certainly is the way it is at East Howard. It's, it probably will be held to the existing numbers, especially in a case like this where it's more than that one bedroom per 10,000. So I would assume that they would, you wouldn't have the ability to add, just because that makes the piping bigger, it makes the, the end, the end system all has to be bigger.
So just that, yeah. Does the lot that has the septic on it, um, would that be a buildable lot once this is attached to Townsor?
Not by current zoning, no. You still need your 40,000 square feet. If, even if um, Dorothy had, even if they combined every, all their lots, it'd still be less than 40,000 square feet.
And you still need frontage on a road, which it does not have.
Right, unless Dorothy, is it Dorothy in number, what number, 12? No, we're six. She must be four.
She's 10.
10 and 12.
She's 10 and 12.
Oh, is there any chance that they could get frontage from Beverly Lane?
If you could build a cul-de-sac, but there's no room, you'd have to have your 40,000 plus the area of the, of the frontage you're creating. The, the existing 30 feet on Beverly Lane, even if they got the okay from all the owners on Beverly Lane, is uh, far less than you would need for frontage. You need 150 feet of frontage. This is where you see, you see developers building cul-de-sacs to create the frontage. So you're taking an undersized lot and cutting it in half, basically, so there's no, you know, without variant, huge variants, it's where you'd be re-notified of any variance in a situation like that.
And if Beverly Lane is a private way, then, as Mr. Kroto said, every lot owner would have to agree to let the O'Conners use it for frontage and access, and usually people don't like to do that.
Did, did the O'Conners own all the homes on um, the cul, on Beverly Lane?
They would like to, I'm sure.
Not to buy it all, which, no.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just curious. I, I guess you don't know unless you ask. So um, so right now, it's the, you're looking for a special permit to demolish the existing non-conforming dwelling and instruct another non-conforming um, dwelling?
That's the petition, yes, with a special permit from this board. They're allowed to do that.
Instead of a variance?
It does not need a variance anymore.
Anymore? When did, did it need a variance?
Nine years. The law changed nine years.
I see. Okay, and it's going to be, it's not going to be the same footprint? But is it going to be in a different location than?
No, it's basically in the same location, squared off uh, one of the corners and stretched it out a little bit and moved it a little bit towards Earl Terrace.
Oh, so it's a tiny bit closer to the road, but I wrote down these numbers.
It's going from 60 feet to 40 feet, basically. Moving 20.
So 40 feet closer to Earl Terrace.
20 feet closer to Earl Terrace.
And then it's, and that's within the setback, required setback.
25, 25 feet is a setback, is it?
Right, and then it's going to be going up. That's where the volume comes from.
Correct.
And they're going to be the same requirements as if, for the construction during the um.
I think you can rely on the chairman to impose those restrictions, yes.
They're about. And do you know what the intent is about the shed? My aunt's shed, number six?
I don't believe there's any intent at this time.
Oh, okay. So that's not, at this point?
Yeah, the development is specifically up at that number 12 lot. So there's no, this, part of this project, there's no work going on down towards your aunt's place.
Okay, that must have been one of the um, board members that asked the question, because there was a, there was a little bit of a discussion about the shed.
He was concerned that Dorothy's shed was over the lot line, but it's, they think it's the other way around. The neighbors' sheds are on to Dorothy as well.
And even if it was Dorothy's shed, she, she's a common owner of all that other property, right?
Correct, anything that, the, correct, anything that's on between her lot lines, right, would technically merge the lots.
So all the lots are, that are, you know, O'Connor's lots are owned by all of them, like the Dorothy and then whatever number that is, sort of, Patrick and, you know, um, sorry. So number 12 and number 10. Okay.
Okay, are we done?
I, I, I think that answers my question. We were just curious about um, what the plan was, because we didn't, I did write to see if we could come in and look at the plans, because it's really not practical for my aunt to be um, doing this electronically. I apologize to the board members for taking up your time, but I appreciate seeing the um.
No, that's, that's okay. This is difficult to do online. Trust me, that's why I put it on.
Good, bye.
Thank you so much, Lauren.
Get on. But in any event, they are, I believe, entitled to the special permit under the law, but your questions certainly are legitimate. Is there anyone else out there in the public that would like to speak to this petition? To close the public hearing, Mr. Donahue.
Mr. Ryer, did you move to close the public hearing?
I did. Well, I thought Mr. Donahue was going to make the motion, did he?
I made the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy seconded, so, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. Um, I'll make a motion, and we will want the construction restriction on here, as Attorney Crowell pointed out. I'll make a motion that in case 2020-23, Patrick D. O'Connor and Dorothy O'Connor, be granted a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, and Section 325-54, is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 12 year Earl Terrace, map 12 parcel N1-29, in the RH1 zoning district. Application, substantial exterior construction or substantial nude landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Can I have a second on the motion, please?
I'll second.
Okay, who was that, Al?
Al.
Al Donahue seconded on the motion. Um, I think this case meets the requirements of the Bylaw and the Gale case. Application of pre-existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity is created, and it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. Any discussion from any of the board members, comments?
As you described, it's within the Gale case, and it will not negatively impact the neighborhood.
Anyone else? Mr. Armstrong?
I too had questions about the, the extra lots and how that was relevant to it, and I think the Caneelis' uh, questions were very good, and in the, the answers, uh, I understand and I agree with, so I appreciate that.
Yes, no, I thought they were good questions, and, you know, we don't know what the owners or what subsequent owners might do down the line, but I think they would have significant issues in further developing this lot. They'd have to come back to us and just looking at the um, the plot plan, I think they'd have to get a variance, and at least on the face of it, I don't see that that would happen. I mean, they'd be certainly entitled to argue their entitlement to it, but I think it would be kind of a long shot. In any event, that's on the road. Right now, we have this application and this motion, so all in favor of the motion granting a special permit? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Aye, Al Murphy.
Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed? Special permit is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, and I'll authorize Ms. Delaney to stamp the plans and sign the decision on behalf of the board under the circumstances of the virus. All right, thank you all for participating. Mr. Donahue, if you could call our next case, please.
May, may I just add one thing? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I requested permission to record, but I didn't receive um, permission, so I didn't, but is there um, an, is this being recorded by somebody? Or will we get minutes, or?
I am recording.
If you're on to the Howard website, um, channel 18, and then though you'll find, eventually you scroll down and you'll see it says YouTube videos.
Yeah.
And probably tomorrow, the next day, this will be up there on YouTube.
Okay, well, thank you.
The channel 18, yes, they're a YouTube site. It will be, it has been recorded, or will be, is being recorded, and will be up there, so you can look at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe.
Okay, Al.
Case number 2020-24, Keith N. Roger and Jill C. Roger, through their agent, attorney William Crowell, have applied for special permit or in the alternate, a variance to construct and, and add addition onto a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, uh, 325 Table 2, Area Regulation 325-54, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 20 Victory Drive, map 12 parcel T4-24, in the RH1 zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Crowell, if you could introduce yourself and present your petition, please. Wait a minute, Attorney Crowell has disappeared. Oh, no, he's there.
His screen's frozen.
Yeah, Attorney, oh, you're, you're frozen. We got to get Attorney Crowell back. Give him a minute. And you wonder why I hate this program?
I think we have Attorney Ford, who is representing the last two cases. If we can't get Attorney Crowell back quickly, we might be able to um, move out of sequence.
Well, let's just give him a second and see if he comes back.
Well, he's got the next several cases.
Yeah, he's got three, I think, he said, three more. All right, well, why don't we go down to Attorney Ford? He's here. Let's do the uh, last two cases, 2020-27 and 2028. So if you could, 2028, if you could call.
Case number 20, 2020-27, case number 20, 20-28. Walter J. Moberg, Jr.
At a time, Al. Just let's do one at a time. I think it'd be too confusing to do them together.
All right. 2020-27, Walter J. Moberg, Jr., through his agent, attorney Michael Ford, has applied for variance to reconfigure the lot lines of two existing lots and a special permit for the creation of a new non-conformity. The application is pursuant to the code of town of Howard, 325-52, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, 10, and 6. The property is located at 1110 Queen Anne Road, map 75 parcel 56, in the RH zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Ford, if you'd like to present your petition, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Mike Boyd, representing the petitioner.
Yes, I can hear you. Everybody else? Okay?
Right, the, uh, the presentation, Mr. Chairman, is the same for both of these petitions inasmuch as we're seeking to relocate the common boundary line between the two lots. So with your permission, I will be speaking about both lots um, in the presentation of the first case, if, if that's all right with the chair.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to do that, and then when we resolve that one, we'll go to the next case, and maybe we can just incorporate by reference all the testimony from the first case, not repeat it all.
Fine.
Too confusing, I think, to jumble them together.
Okay, fine. Um, so, um, I represent Walter Moberg and his wife. Mr. Moberg owns 110, which is the case that has been read into the record, uh, and he and his wife both own um, 112, which is adjacent. Little background, these two parcels were one parcel up until 1921. Uh, they were owned, they were in the Kendrick family, and uh, they were separated out not by a plan or a subdivision, but by what they call subdivision by deed back then. Somebody simply uh, in, in a narrative deed, conveyed out from 110, which is before you in this case, lot 112. So that's how they got divided uh, into two lots. Uh, subsequently, um, uh, a plan was done of 112, uh, but there is not a plan of record, other than the assesses map, of 110. Both of them have old houses on them, 110, which is before you, parts of that house of, actually date back to 1740. There was an era in the narrative that I submitted. There was an era in the narrative that I've submitted, Mr. Chairman. 110 does not have four bedrooms. It's a very old house. There's small rooms in there. But there's really only two bedrooms that meet the code for bedrooms in that lot presently. When 112 came on the market about a year ago, Mr. and Mrs. Moberg bought it. Mr. Moberg is a descendant of the Kendricks. You may have seen that. I sent to the board this afternoon. I sent it to Cheryl, and she sent on to board members a nice history that my clients have put together about the lots and what had happened to the two lots over the years and what they were intending to do with this new common boundary line. So currently, 110 has 21,958 square feet. It is non-conforming, the house on it, in terms of the side yard setback and the rear yard setback with lot 112. The rear yard setback is only eight feet currently, and the side yard setback is 11 feet. The proposed new common lot line would add about 14,000 square feet to 110 and bring it up to 35,000 plus square feet. It would lower the frontage of 110 from 233 down to 226. Still conforming, frontage is 150 in that area. And the front yard setback would still comply at 27.9. The rear yard setback would improve and become compliant. It currently is only eight feet from that back lot line, and this would make it complying, the new common lot line. So it'll be 24.4 feet off of the rear lot line. So the result is 110 becomes more conforming in terms of area, continues to be the same distance from the side yard, 11.1. We simply can't improve on that. That's a common boundary line. But we do improve on the rear yard setback, so that lot 10's building coverage goes down, not that it had a problem. It's far below the 15%, but it would go down to 4.4. The site coverage would also go down from 11% to 7.5%, but it's not an issue currently either. There is no construction proposed in any of these two variance petitions. It only deals with a change in the lot line. Now significantly, Mr. Chairman, with respect to both lots, they're located in Zone 2. So obviously, the board is familiar with the overlay zoning districts, the groundwater protection districts. And as you were discussing in an earlier petition this evening, the Board of Health currently requires 10,000 square feet per bedroom in those Zone 2 districts. So one of the goals of this redivision, making the lots more nearly equal in terms of their lot size, is to allow three bedrooms on each lot. And so I've had a discussion with the Board of Health. I've indicated that my clients have no problem limiting each lot going forward to three bedrooms. I will be working out a deed restriction with the Board of Health on each one of the lots for a three-bedroom deed restriction. You may scratch your head and say, geez, isn't that an area where they've just finished putting the sewer line in, and they're both going to be connected to the town sewer within the next year or so? That's true, but it is still a requirement for three bedrooms to have 10,000 square feet in a Zone 2. My clients believe in that requirement, and they're willing to deed restrict both properties. So the end result is that 112 gets better in all respects. That's not 110 now, it's 112, but I do want to speak to that for a moment, Mr. Chairman. 112 gets better in terms of frontage. It's currently non-conforming in terms of frontage, and we give it a little more frontage to make it more conforming. It goes from 84 up to 91. All of the setbacks for 112 stay the same. Two of them are non-conforming, the side yard and the rear yard, but we can't improve on those. Lot coverage, while it goes up, is still way under the allowed, as is building coverage. But the area of 112 goes down. And 112 is currently conforming in terms of area, even though it's a non-conforming lot in terms of frontage. And so as a result of creating that new nonconformity, we can't do this change in the common lot line under the non-conforming section, under the Gale case, because we're creating a new nonconformity, which is why I applied for a variance as well as the special permit. So the end result is that we end up with two lots, both of them larger than 30,000 square feet. Both of them will be limited to no more than three bedrooms, so they'll comply with the Zone 2 requirements that they're also located in. Both of them will have the same setbacks of the non-conforming structures, except that the very close rear yard setback on 110 will be improved and become conforming, and the lots will lay out better for each one. So the Mobergs, as I said, being a relation to the Kendricks from many years ago, who owned this as one parcel, saw an opportunity to put the parcels back together and to bring them more into compliance. If you had an opportunity to read my client's letter about the history of the site, you'd also see some of the pictures that he attached. When they bought 112, there was a driveway that circled, went into 112 and circled right around 110 and went out the other side. It didn't appear that it was a permitted use, but they've been able to remove that. Each lot now has a separate driveway to become conforming. Each lot will have its own sewer connection. Each lot will now be more than 30,000 square feet. So we think from a special permit standpoint, this certainly will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, the nonconformities, except for the area of 112, all improve. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to address at this point as well the variance criteria, because obviously we're required to give you some evidence under 48, Section 10 because of the creation of the new nonconformity of the size of lot 112.
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so as the board knows, under 4810, there are three criteria for a variance. First, we've got to show you that there are some unique conditions that relate to either soil, shape, or topography of the land or the structures that affect this land, but not generally the zoning district. I'd ask the board to take a look at the unique shape of 112 as it currently sits. It's almost like a pork chop, but it's a very large pork chop with the frontage. And the entire backside of 110 is very, very close to 112, including the house currently, where the rear yard setback is only eight feet. So I'd suggest that the unique condition here is the shape of the lot, particularly lot 112. And it is a result of that shape that creates the hardship where 110 finds itself back great up against the rear yard currently of 112. And also, the clients will be able to have three bedrooms on each lot. Lot 112 actually will lose one bedroom. It currently has four. And it will go down to three, and then lot 110 will have three as well at some point. So a little enforcement of the bylaw creates a hardship because they don't, they're unable to get that privacy, even though they've picked up both lots on the rear yard, or to make the lots more equal in terms of their size and their shape. I'd suggest, Mr. Chairman, that desire of relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Frankly, I think it's in the public good that the setbacks are improved by this new common lot line and that being in a Zone 2, even though they will be on the sewer going forward, they will each have 10,000 square feet per bedroom on their parcels and therefore comply with the spirit and intent of the groundwater protection provisions of the town of Howard. By that same reason, the groundwater protection district, I'd suggest respectfully that this does not nullify or substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. In fact, it brings the two parcels more closely into compliance with the purpose and intent of the bylaw in terms of area, use, frontage, and setbacks. And so we'd ask, we know that a variance is discretionary. We know the elements are conjunctive, and you have to find all three. We'd respectfully request that you exercise that discretion and grant the variance requested. Again, the variance is only because of the one new nonconformity, the smaller lot size of 112. All the other dimensional issues go in the right direction. Happy to take questions. I think the Mobergs, Mr. Chairman, might be on the line as well, if there's a specific question for them as well.
Okay, thank you, attorney Ford. Chris, questions, comments?
Just a comment. I was able to see the property, and obviously, everything's existing, the buildings are existing. The lot obviously won't be changed, will be changed with the shape, but it seems like the change makes it more practical for the houses and for the neighborhood, and it does not take away at all from where the neighborhood is right now. So the change seems fine with me. I have no questions.
Mr. Donahue?
Attorney Ford, I was curious as to where the septic system is on the property, 1112.
1112, yeah, I think I have a plan of it. Give me just a second. It was recently inspected when they bought it. One second. If Walter's on the line, he might know. I'm not sure whether it's out back or it's in front.
This is Walter Vonn and Moberg. Can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello.
From the board member is, where is the location of the septic currently on 1112?
It's located behind the house on 1112, and it is, you know, on the, basically, the north side of the property outside the house.
All right, thank you. Redivision, Mr. Donahue.
All right, that's set up for a three, that's set for a three-bedroom system?
Yes, it is. I think it's actually set for a four-bedroom system, but we plan to deconstruct a small room to make sure that it's only three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Actually, my only question was on the septic system, but I've got to admit that on this particular petition, having the aerials, and I particularly enjoyed the story of the family history. So that was, I really appreciate that, and those pictures were excellent. So, no, I think this is, I'm fine right now to go forward with this and do all the questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any questions. I understand now the rationale behind it, and I, it's been a usual case, and I think we can justify a variance, special permit, certainly. But I think on 112, I know that's not in front of us now, but we'll do that in a second. Since we're reducing the square footage from 43,754 plus or minus down to 30,217 plus or minus, which will now be under the minimum lot size, which it met at the 43, it will not. I would like to put a condition on that the petitioner acknowledges that they're doing this and any hardship resulting from this is going to be self-created and will not serve as a basis for a future grant of variance. My concern is, we have a conforming lot size now, and we're making it non-conforming by the owner's agreement, which is fine. I understand that. But I don't want this owner or a future owner to come back and claim hardship when they want to do something else on the basis of a reduction, you know, or reduce lot size.
So that would be a condition on 112, Mr. Ryer?
Yes, it would only be 112 because that's the one that's presently conforming. That would now become non-conforming.
Right, so the condition, as I understand you're articulating, is that that any, any future variance request with respect to changing the lot size of 112 again would be considered self-created? Is what your base?
Right, because they are self-creating it by reducing the lot size here.
I, I don't think we have a problem with that condition on 112.
Okay.
Mike, it's Walter Vonn. That's fine with us. We're just trying to correct some that our great-grandmother Abigail did when she divided it down the middle of the driveway. And I think that, you know, it's a fair thing to accept these conditions.
Yeah, and it's nothing personal, but we had this very case come before us a number of years ago, I don't know, maybe eight, 10 years ago. And they had changed the lot line, and then they wanted to come back and argue they were entitled to a variance, and they had created the problem when they changed the lot line. So I just don't want that to come back again. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this case 2020-27? Hearing no one else?
Hi, this is Joan Graney. I'm at 17 Ellis Drive. I don't know if you can see me. I'm trying to get my camera to work, so you can actually.
We can hear you, so go ahead.
It seems like, so my backyard abuts each one of these properties. And it seems like a good plan, because it seems like it evens out the lots that both, that each abut my backyard. I'm just wondering how you go from a four-bedroom dwelling to a three-bedroom dwelling? Does that mean that the structure, like, there's going to be tear-down and rebuilding of a three family, I mean, a three-bedroom home on each of the lots?
I can answer that?
I'll let him address that.
Sure. Very good question. So the Board of Health looks at rooms inside a house, and they have a definition contained in the state sanitary code as to what constitutes a bedroom. It has to be of a certain minimum size, but more importantly, it has to provide privacy. And so what they will require is that one of the rooms currently, which has been used as a bedroom over time, the doorway entrance into that, the door will have to come off, and the doorway entrance will have to be widened to at least six feet, so that the Board of Health is satisfied that it doesn't provide the privacy of a bedroom. And the room is then used as a den, a library, a study, some other purpose. But that's how that conversion will occur. So the square footage of the house will not change. It's not going to be anything you'll see from the outside. But from the inside, we do have to file a billing permit, go through that process, and the Board of Health has to come out and do an inspection.
Okay, and as far as the first lot, 1110, is anything going to be built there? Or just going to stay the way it is?
Not in this petition. It will be restricted in the future going forward to not more than three bedrooms. It's at 35,000 square feet. But there's nothing at this time.
Okay, and then lastly, it sounds like I did see the plans on Exella, so I appreciated those being put up there. But I, Mr. Ford, I would be very interested to see the history that you, and the narrative that you were talking about, just because it sounds very interesting.
That will be placed on the Exella platform as well. I just didn't get to do it today.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak to this petition?
Mr. Ryer, it's Walter Vonn again. We haven't met our abutter there, Jane Graney, but we're glad to give a tour and explain the history of the property, just like we were able to do with Alex and Chris at some point.
Oh, Walter, thank you very much. It's nice to meet you virtually as well. I would love that.
Yes.
That would be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no one out there in the public wanting to speak further, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, second. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, no one's opposed. Hearing is now closed. Okay, no one's opposed. Hearing is now closed. I'll make a motion in case 2020-27 that Walter J. Moberg Jr. be granted a variance to reconfigure the lot lines of two existing lots and be granted a special permit for the creation of a new nonconformity. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 32552, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Sections 10 and 6. The property is located at 1110 Queen Anne Road, Map 75, Parcel S6 in the RH zoning district. Can I have a second, please? Mr. Armstrong. All right, second from Mr. Armstrong. Discussion by the board. I, I found Attorney Ford's arguments, given the shape of the lot and history of this, it's a little unusual, but I do think it meets the requirements for a variance and certainly for a special permit. It's kind of an interesting situation, but I, I think it's a legitimate variance petition, so I support it.
I think the property is trying to give the Mobergs a certain amount of privacy, which they do not have at this particular time. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Moberg for the tour and the history of the property.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes unanimously and unanimously and the variance and special permit are granted in case 2020-27. Mr. Donahue, why don't you call case 2020-28, please?
Okay, 20-28. Walter J. Moberg, through his agent, Attorney Michael Ford, has applied for variance to reconfigure the lot line of two existing lots and a special permit for the creation of a new nonconformity. The application pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325-52, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Sections 10 and 66. The property is located at 1112 Queen Anne Road, Map 75, Parcel S5 and the RH zoning district.
Okay, this is, as we had stated previously with regard to case 2020-27, a companion case to case 2020-27. And I'll make a motion that we incorporate all of the testimony in case 2020-27 into this case 2020-28 as it is not necessary to repeat at all. Can I have a second on that motion, Mr. Donahue, please?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Is any, everybody in agreement with that?
Aye. Aye.
Call a vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, but I will give Attorney Ford a chance to add anything he would like to.
No, Mr. Chairman, I think you've covered it with that incorporation of all of the testimony of the prior one because I think it would be our case if we put it in again. So that's a very expeditious way to do it. I understand that the same motion will be made on this one with the exception of the additional condition that the chairman talked about.
Yes. Is there anyone out in the public who would like to comment on this? Hearing no one, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, Chris? Second by Chris Murphy. Discussion on closing the public hearing? No discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, public hearing is closed. I will make a motion in the case, in case 2020-28, Walter J. Moberg be granted a variance to reconfigure the lot lines of two existing lots and be granted a special permit for the creation of a new nonconformity. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 32552, as set forth in MGL Chapters 48, Section 10 and, I'm sorry, Chapter 48, Sections 10 and 6. The property is located at 112 Queen Anne Road, Map 75, Parcel S5 in the RH zoning district, subject to the following condition. It is a condition that the petitioner has acknowledged that in taking Lot 2, which is 1112 Queen Anne Road, from 43,754 plus or minus square feet to 30,217 plus or minus square feet. Any hardship resulting therefrom is self-created and will not serve as the basis for any future grant of a variance. Could I have a second on the motion, please? Maybe Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
Second. Discussion by the board?
No discussion.
Same reasons I expressed in the case 2020-21. I think this variance can properly be granted in this case and certainly meets the requirements for a special permit. There's really going to be no visible change to anyone, so it's certainly not going to have a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I'm sorry, did somebody else want to comment? Nope. All right, all in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And in case 2020-27 and 2020-28, I authorize Ms. Delaney to stamp in all of the plans submitted and also to sign the decisions on behalf of the board.
Okay, Attorney. Thank you. Before I leave, I'd like to extend my thanks to Attorney Crowell for freezing when he did and making my evening a little earlier. So Bill, anytime you want to freeze when you're in front of me, you can. Thanks.
Yes, Bill, it's Walter Ivana. You helped us with a deed here a few years ago and I want to thank Chairman Ryer and the others there. This won't be a visual change, but this is going to be a great opportunity for the Kendrick family as we continue into our eighth generation on the property. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Moberg. I'm right around the corner down the street there in Church Street, so I'm very familiar with that property and you folks have done a wonderful job on it.
Well, we, we love that property, so thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
You can accommodate anytime, Mike.
Attorney Crowell is back happily with us and you may, what case do we need here? I guess 2020-24, Mr. Donahue?
Yes. Let's see, 20-2020-24. Kenneth N. Roger and Jill C. Roger, through their agent, Attorney William Crowell, have applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to construct an addition onto a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325 Table 2, Area Regulation 325-54, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, the property is located at 20 Victory Drive, Map 12 Parcel T4-24 in the RH-1 zoning district.
Attorney Crowell, okay, you're moved. You're still with us? That's funny. Every time somebody leaves, all the little boxes, it gets shuffled.
I don't know what happened earlier, but thank you for hanging in with me. We think maybe a car hit a pole or something, but it just didn't work out. So Attorney William Crowell, representing Ken and Jill Roger, this evening for a special permit for an addition of a bathroom and a closet to the pre-existing nonconforming, nonconforming, single-family dwelling at 20 Victory Drive. This one is north of Lower County. And very straightforward. They're squaring off the existing dwelling as shown on the plan. They're not coming any closer to the lot line than the existing, than the dwelling currently is at 11.8. On the, on the westerly side, south westerly side, it's 11.8. The addition will be at 15.3. So you ask, well, why do you need the board's special permit? It's because they're creating habitable space that is within 20 feet of the southerly lot line. And, and that's the whole issue here. The building coverage is still 9.1%, well below 30%. Site coverage, 15%, still well below 35% maximum. And it would argue there would be no substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, odors, congestion or the like, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. Would ask that the board grant the special permit this evening.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Crowell. Chris, any comments, questions?
No comments. This seems very straightforward, Bill says, so no, no, no comments.
Al?
I, in conjunction with Gale case, and it also will not be a detriment in any way, shape or form to the neighborhood.
Brian?
I don't question comments. It seems straightforward, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Jamie?
I agree. No questions.
The only question, Attorney Crowell, do they, the Rogers also own Lot 248?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Can I have a second? Brian?
Second.
Second from Mr. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Are you unanimous? I'll make a motion that in case 2020-24, Kenneth N. Roger and Jill C. Roger be granted a special permit in addition onto a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325 Table 2, Area Regulations, and 32554, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 20 Victory Drive, Map 12, Parcel T4-24 in the RH1 zoning district. The condition that there be no demolition, substantial exterior construction, or substantial new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Could I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Murphy, second to the motion? I think this clearly meets the Gale case and the bylaw, not going to have any substantial impact on the neighborhood and intensification of a pre-existing, nonconformity. No new nonconformity. I see no issue in granting a special permit. Comments? Anyone else, gentlemen? No? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Thank you.
Granted, huh? Okay, you're chasing me. Special permits granted in case 2020-24. And I authorize Ms. Delaney to stamp in all of the plans and documents and to sign the decision on behalf of the board. Okay, Mr. Donahue?
Case 2020-25. Richard, and I'll ask for the pronunciation of the last name.
Gasek.
Gasek. Gasek. So is Attorney William Crowell has applied for a special permit and the alternative of variance to construct a master bedroom addition and a covered porch onto the pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325 Table 2, Area Regulation 325-54, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 19 Pinewood Lane, Map 4 Parcel T1-29 in the RH1 zoning district.
Hey, Attorney Crowell, if you could present your petition, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell, representing the petitioner, Richard Gasek, this evening. This one is south of Lower County Road in West Howard. Again, a pretty straightforward case. There are two pieces to it. The proposed addition for a master bedroom on the northeast side and then the covered porch coming a little bit closer to Pinewood Lane on the west side, as per the plans submitted with the petition by Moran Engineering and by Patriot Builders. The existing dwelling on the east side is 11.1 feet. That will, from the lot line, that will decrease a little bit to 10.2 and then for the master bedroom addition. And then on the westerly side, the existing porch is, this existing dwelling, sorry, is 24.8, which is nonconforming, and that would decrease to 19.8 with the covered porch. So they're supposed to have 25 feet from the road and 20, 20 feet from the lot lines. So they have pre-existing nonconformities that would be intensified under the Gale case, as shown on the plan, by means of a special permit. And would I, I would argue that, that the special permit would not, the renovations would not constitute or create a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic or the like, and would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood and ask that the board grant the special permit relief this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris Murphy, any comments, questions?
No, I have no comments or questions.
Al Donahue?
Yes, I have a question with regard to the existing master bedroom. Is there a bathroom in there?
In the existing master bedroom?
The only reason I asked that question is. It would appear not. It's in the hallway.
Okay.
So this would give a master bath and a closet off of the master bedroom. That's really what's happening here is not so much an expansion of the master bedroom as giving them privacy to a new master bathroom. Thank you.
Okay, Brian Sullivan?
No, thank you, Alex. Actually, there's one question on the porch. That's not a covered, I mean, that's not a, there's no walls there. It's just a pillar holding up a roof and a five-foot wide section, right?
Correct. As per the plans, when you look at the front elevation, it's just going pillars, pillars with a roof, covered porch.
I always think of porch as some sort of walls or a screened area, so I didn't see where that's, that exists. No, I think it was straightforward here. I have a little questions.
Okay, Jamie O?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions. Is there anyone out in the public that would like to speak to this application?
Yes, we would. This is Matthew and Nicole Applebaum speaking. How are you?
Thank you. Yourself?
I am well, thanks. I'm wondering if you guys have received the letter that we submitted prior to the meeting?
No.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We submitted a letter, was mailed out to you folks last Thursday, just wondering if you had received it?
I did not receive it yet, I received the mail in the building department for zoning. I don't know why, but I haven't. The mail goes, it goes through a decontamination process through Town Hall, so sometimes things get sent to the wrong department.
Understandable, if, if, if I could take a moment, I'd like to read the letter that we submitted. On behalf of us, we are, we are located sixteen Pine Lane. Our property is directly behind the proposal property. So we, as closest and most immediately impacted by the proposed master bedroom addition of nineteen Pinewood Lane, being the direct rear abutis to the property, owners of sixteen Pinewood Lane have some concerns and need additional information regards proposal, renovation and addition. They are as follows, one, the addition proposed increases the non-conformity of the existing dwelling. And although many dwellings in the neighborhood are non-conforming, we have not found that dwellings in the neighborhood apply for additions that add to the non-conformity in this neighborhood. Item two, the addition in the rear and the covered front porch will create additional stormwater runoff, most particularly in the rear. The plans submitted do not address the additional runoff or the drainage plans to address this issue. Our main concern is the proximity of our backyard and it being flooded since proposed roof is only ten feet from the property line. Number three, the proposed addition will further impose the privacy of our backyard. Again, the proposed plans do not provide a landscaping plan depicting evergreen screening that would provide privacy for both residences. Four, my question to the board is, how many bedrooms is the current septic system discharge approved for? In accordance with the plans submitted, there are three bedrooms in the house. However, there is a detached garage that has living space above it, and we have witnessed over the past two years that is being used as additional bedroom while weekly renters occupy the property. We also have information that there is an existing bedroom and bathroom in that location above their garage. That is not depicted in any of the plans that we saw on the Excelist sheets that provided on the website. So we don't know if the board has any record of that, and that is a concern of ours. Also, the plans listed three-bedroom house, which there's obviously more bedrooms because there's one in the, in the attached detached garage. Furthermore, based on the plans or lack thereof, we are suggesting that the applicant should provide the following information prior to the zoning board of appeals voting a decision. And they are as follows, one, certificate of occupancy, excuse me, occupancy of a four-bedroom dwelling. Septic system design and permit to discharge, discharge for a four-bedroom dwelling home. Stormwater management system designed for the additional runoff. Provide a landscaping design plan depicting evergreen screening of the non-conforming additions so that it will provide privacy for both residences. And lastly, provide a construction timeframe, start to finish, and that no construction shall be performed from May first to November first, considering the extreme close proximity of the addition, approximately ten feet from the property line. At this time, we'd like to thank the board for our thoughts and concerns and taking them into consideration.
Thank you. Attorney Crowell, would you like to respond to any of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I did not receive a letter and a copy of this letter, and I don't think Mr. Gasek did, or he would have made me aware of it. As this board knows, with the Gale case, the previous speaker made reference to there were no intensifications or increases in non-conformities in the neighborhood. I have no way of knowing that or verifying that, I think that'd be very difficult to verify, but this board has the authority under the Gale case to intensify a non-conformity, to increase a non-conformity if the board feels, finds that such an increase would not create a substantial detriment, key word being substantial, to the entire neighborhood, not just to an immediate abutter, but to the entire neighborhood. Basically, I think this board, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you, you have looked at, is it going to bring down the property values of the immediate neighborhood? I don't see that that would be the case here, and the board has the authority under the Gale case to increase a non-conformity. In this particular, with this particular addition, the existing house is eleven point one feet northeast corner to, I believe, the speaker's property to the rear. The addition of a bedroom, a master bath would go from eleven point one to ten point two. I would submit that that's a minimal increase in terms of an encroachment in, towards the lot line.
Sir?
Less, let me finish, please. Mr. Chairman, may I finish? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry. Are you done?
No, I wasn't, but I was being interrupted and I wanted to finish.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't see what happened, I was listening actually and looking at the plan.
Okay. So it, it's not coming, it's less than one foot closer to the lot line. It's still more than ten feet from the lot line. As the board knows, in a lot of grandfathered situations, the setback is ten feet anyway. So we're still more than ten feet, we're only coming closer, less than one foot to the real lot line. As far as stormwater runoff and so forth, this board does not generally get into that. Eight. The law in Massachusetts in general says that we, that, that my clients cannot create a situation on their lot that creates a nuisance to the abutting lot by running water off, et cetera. So they would have to take pains to make sure that that didn't happen. I would suggest to them that they do that and that they create some visual screening, if that's what the neighbor wants. I, I don't think that he would be opposed to that, within reason. As far as septic capacity, I don't know anything about a bedroom over the garage. If he's exceeding, if he's renting illegally, or if he's exceeding the number of bedrooms by having a bedroom over the garage, that is a board of health matter that the neighbor could report to the board of health, and the board of health could enforce that. It's not a zoning issue as such. But if, if, if he has a four-bedroom capacity into his septic, he would be allowed, generally speaking, to have a bedroom and a bathroom over the garage, but not rented. But he could, many, many folks have bedrooms over their garage, so that when the relatives visit, they can at least say, go out and, you know, at night and go out and go to bed over the garage. So I, I don't see that as something that this board really needs to address this evening. He's requested a a certificate of occupancy for a four-bedroom dwelling. Again, that's a, that's, it's not a zoning issue, it would be a board of health issue or a building inspector issue. Same with the, the septic issue, question, stormwater, it's not something this board generally gets into. I think it's covered by the law in Massachusetts anyway. Landscape plan, we, we would try to accommodate, I'd recommend that we, that my client accommodate within reason as far as visual screening, aravites or something like that. The no construction restriction, as the chairman knows, you folks have routinely over the last three years or more, said no construction from June thirtieth to Labor Day in any year, not May first to November one. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Crowley, to touch on your point, you say that it doesn't exceed what is already there. However, the ten feet isn't our issue, it's the ten feet by an additional fourteen feet, which is going to be running parallel to our backyard.
Okay.
We already have one, we already have one up that comes rolling now into our yard, and it's a concern of ours.
Okay, there's a case in the state of Massachusetts referred to as the Gale case. And basically, it says that an applicant can intensify a pre-existing non-conformity, which is what they're doing here, as long as they are not creating any new non-conformity, which they're not, as long as it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. And the key there is neighborhood, not the neighbor, and I understand you've got some concerns, but the applicant is legally entitled under this case to do what it is proposing to do here, at least in my opinion. We'll see what the other board members say, but it seems to me it meets those requirements of the Gale case. Now, I don't mind putting a condition, we always put the construction condition in, which I intended to do on this case because of the, the location there. If you'd like some evergreen screening along the back of the addition, I, Attorney Crowell has said the applicant would be okay with that, I, we can certainly make that a condition. But the applicant in this case, in my opinion, is entitled to do this. Attorney Crowell also correctly pointed out that any septic issue, you've got to go to the board of the, of health, not to us here. We do zoning, the bedrooms and the septics, that's the board of health, you'd have to talk to them about that. I'm not a Massachusetts lawyer, so I'm not going to comment beyond what Attorney Crowell has already said about runoff. I am a lawyer, but not admitted here in Connecticut. And certainly, you would have a remedy at law if whatever they're doing here causes a problem with runoff that violates the existing law. And I don't know what that is, Attorney Crowell, I've got no reason to doubt what he said was the case here.
Mr. Chairman, may I make an addition to not stormwater runoff, but the, about his concern about the fourteen-foot addition. The bylaw, the Harwich bylaw allows for, by special permit, prior, even prior to the Gale case, that you can continue along the existing line of an existing dwelling for as long as you want to. We could go even further with that, as long as you don't come any closer to the lot line than the existing dwelling. Here, we're using the Gale case a little bit because of just the, the angle of the dwelling. It, it causes that addition to come point nine feet closer to that lot line, as opposed to going right along and maintaining that. But that's where the Gale case comes into play, and it's not a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, thank you.
But it is increasing the non-conformity of the existing dwelling. So it is coming closer to the property line. And I understand that, you know, you say you can build off an existing property, but the setbacks, and I understand are grandfathered in, but the new laws say you do have to be twenty feet from the rare property line. And I understand there's grandfather setback in early, mid-seventy, and we are increasing the non-conformity of this line. And if you guys, I'm sure you're all familiar with the lots over here, they are small and being ten feet from a property line, abutting in these backyards, when the backyards are only probably fifteen, seven feet, feet big. It is, it is a concern of ours.
I follow that, Chairman, on the Gale case that allows us to increase the non-conformity.
Yes, the magic word is intensify, they are allowed to intensify an existing non-conformity, which is what they're doing here, but they cannot create a new non-conformity. They are intensifying the non-contorm, non-conformity on the where are we here, on the back setback, the rear setback.
Yes.
They suddenly wanted to, let's see.
So it's going to go from eleven point one to ten point two, so it is increasing the non-conformity.
Correct, it is, and that's what the Gale case allows us to do, because if you have a pre-existing non-con, non-conformity, where we are supposed to be twenty feet and we're eleven point one, we have an existing non-conformity, and the Gale case clearly says that with a special permit, we can increase and intensify that non-conformity and go to ten point two with a special permit from this board. That's what it allows us.
What's the difference between the non-conformity and getting a variance then?
The big difference.
So this wouldn't need a variance for what they're trying to do?
That's the significance of the Gale case, is that this is not a variance case anymore as of nine years ago. This is a special permit case.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
You're welcome.
If they were creating a new non-conformity, let's say the proposed addition was going to violate the thirty-foot height requirement, that would be a new, and they comply right now, that would be a new non-conformity, and then they would need a variance for that. But where they're simply intensifying or increasing a pre-existing non-conformity, they only need a special permit under this court case that's called the Gale case.
All right, we have two other questions then. So if you do approve this, and there is a bathroom going in there, and the septic is on the other side of the home, how is it the septic line can go right up against the property line like that to the existing septic?
Yes, it could.
And if you guys do approve this, I know you guys talked about conditions and hardships, and I know you can build up on the existing footing, but granted, being ten feet away from the property, I would like to put a restriction that, God forbid, they decide to add a second floor, or someone else comes to buy the home, that there is not, you're not able to put a second story within ten feet away from the property line on the existing footprint.
Would not agree to that, Mr. Chairman. We don't have to, we have to come back before this board to get permission to do that. This board could simply say no, but we're not going to agree to that now.
And then, one of the cases prior to this, someone did specify that down the line, if you wanted to make changes, that there be a restriction of no hardship, so that's what I was pertaining to.
I, I'm sorry, I did not understand your point.
She was referring to Mr. Ford's case, where Mr. Mulberg agreed to, and Mr. Ford agreed to your restriction. Mr. Ryer, that was totally different from this case, that was in a variance case?
Oh, that was, yeah, that was completely different, has no application to this case whatsoever, ma'am, sorry.
I understand, but I was just saying that where it is ten feet away from the property line, I know it's not a concern right now, being on the board meeting, but down the line, if anyone wanted to put a second story on this house, being only ten feet away from the property line, it is a major concern where our homes are, because we are eighteen feet off the property line from the rare, that our homes would be twenty-eight feet apart, and it would just be a concern of mine, that I wasn't sure if you guys could put a condition on there that a second story cannot be built, since we, if you do approve putting an addition on that is only ten feet away from the property line, that, that, that is a concern to us.
Now, if they were going to put a second story, they would have to come back for another special permit. Or if we're going to go beyond thirty feet, they'd have to try to, they'd have to request a variance, but they'd have to come back to this board again.
So before you guys go and take your vote, and I appreciate your time, if it comes back and it's found that they are in violation of the board of health as far as the amount of bedrooms and a bathroom is concerned, doesn't that affect your decision currently, what you would possibly make?
Well, their plans are going to have to be ultimately reviewed by the board of health, but if you have a specific concern that you don't think the board of health might know about otherwise, because there's nothing about otherwise, because there's nothing about any room or bathroom or whatever in the garage, you need to present that to the Board of Health yourself.
We plan on doing that. It's evident that the board does not know about it because it's not depicted in any of the drawings that are shown.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
And, you know, not to beat a horse, but that's up to you and the Board of Health. That's not before our board here tonight. They don't need, was, that's something that would be a Board of Health concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Attorney Kroll, if, if the, if the concern was that this addition is creating an additional bedroom, it's not. It's creating, it's expanding the master bedroom, expanding it by adding a bathroom. And bathrooms do not dictate septic systems, it's bedrooms that do. So this is, this board doesn't need to concern itself, as you know, with whether this is creating an additional bathroom or not, that that has no bearing on the septic capacity.
Yeah, but to your point with what you said earlier about as far as dust, noise, and things of that nature, they, they have anywhere between two and six vehicles at that residence every weekend. And it's just going to, it's going to break down the private roads, it's causing more speeding, there's more people there, it's just, it's going to cause a nuisance to the neighborhood as a whole.
With all due respect, sir, I don't think that adding a master bedroom is going to create additional, substantial additional traffic or nuisance on that property. Anything about traffic, you would report to either the police or to the building inspector.
So will create a nuisance to us being 10 feet from the property line. So that's, that is our concern. And like I said, the lots over here are small and they're, and I, we just added on to our home last year, and I was very respectful to the property lines, and I did not exceed my rare property line. I feel that the neighborhood, the yards are very small, that 10 feet from a property line is very close because we are increasing the non-conformity of the existing dwelling, so.
Okay, anybody else out in the public like to speak to this petition? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Could I have a second, Mr. Donahue, please?
Second.
Second to Mr. Donahue. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, I will make a motion in the case, in case 2020-25, that Richard Gasek be granted a special permit to construct the master bedroom addition and a covered porch onto a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, and 325-54 is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 19 Pinewood Lane, Map 4, Parcel T1-29, in the RH1 zoning district. With the condition that there shall be no demolition, substantial exterior construction, or substantial new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year, and with a further condition, that the applicant will plan and maintain screening evergreens along the 14-foot length of the addition, wait, on the west side, along the 14-foot length of the addition to the master bedroom.
That's the east side, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the east side. I'm sorry, yeah, I see, I didn't see the, I've been looking all over for the indicator. It's over in the little locus box there. Yes, along the east side. Could I have a second, please, Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
Second. Discussion. I think this meets the Gale case, and, well, probably not the bylaw, because it does go a little closer, but it certainly meets the Gale case. It intensifies the pre-existing non-conformity. The proposed project does not create any new non-conformity, and it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformities. Discussion. Comments? Yes, Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I fully appreciate the concerns the butters have. One thing, we got a runoff from that, from the additional master bedroom. It is possible that, can we add, can we add a condition that the runoff from the gutters be maintained into a dry well? I mean, I have several of my gutters the same way. You dig that, that big, big hole with stone, and you have the runoff get into a dry well situation, so it won't go on the property and run into any of the neighbors' land. The other thing is, I'm disappointed there is an additional bedroom over the garage. I realize it's up to the Board of Health, not us, but I wish that that had been expressed in the drawings, that there is an existing dwelling over that garage. But that being the case, and that we have to look at the Gale case situation, if, I would just like to have that added on, regarding the runoff from water, that it be contained in the property and some dry well.
I have no problem with the dry well condition, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will amend my motion. It'll be the same motion, except that with the additional condition that any, I guess, downspouts, gutter downspouts coming off the proposed addition go into a dry well to prevent runoff onto any neighboring property. So could I have a second for that amended motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Donahue, any further discussion? All in favor? Granting the special permit with those conditions? Aye.
Aye.
Special permit granted. Mr. and Mrs. Applebaum, thank you for your comments. I know you're probably not happy, but they did meet the legal requirement for a special permit, and we try to.
Taking a look at this. So, guys, I have a quick question. There's just a citizen with, with a concern, you know, if it's always going to fall back to the Gale case, what is the point of having these public hearings?
Well, the Gale case is the law, so there's not much we can do about it. It used to be before the Gale case, that for this, there would have to be a showing for a variance, but this, was it the Supreme Court of Massachusetts, or the appellate court?
Field court.
And they simply said that the prior reading of the statute was incorrect, and when it's only an intensification of a pre-existing non-conformity, a variance is not required under the Massachusetts general law, the only requirement is for a special permit. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. If we're nearing the home stretch, we can call the last case, Mr. Donahue, please.
Case 2020-26, Timothy D. Gallagher and Claire M. Gallagher, through their agent, attorney William Kroll, have applied for variance to allow for pre-existing non-conforming concerning the site coverage and a special permit, or in the alternative, a variance to create habitable space over an existing garage of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325, Table 2, Area Regulation 325-54, and set forth in MGL 48, Sections 10 and 6. The property is located at 51 Monomoy Road, Parcel 5, K1A16, and RH1 zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Kroll, if you could present your petition, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll, representing Mr. and Mrs. Gallagher this evening, and they are on with us, Timothy and Claire Gallagher, they're at the lower right-hand corner of my screen, anyway. And they are the owners of the property at 51 Monomoy Road. This one is south of Lower County also. They have a certified plot plan by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates. And the main reason that we're here is, came as a, as a big surprise to the petitioners, because they bought this house a year or so ago with a tennis court. And as I stated in my narrative, when they applied for a building permit, the, there was a portion of the property in the FEMA A1 flood zone, the building inspector rightly asked for a certified plot plan, got the certified plot plan, and said, oh, there's a tennis court here, and that affects site coverage. And when the site coverage calculation was made, it was at 49.7%, where the maximum is 35% in an RH1 zone. The petitioners knew nothing about that. It was not, it never came up in the course of purchasing the property in 2017. And the tennis court in question has been there for at least 20 years. It's an asphalt tennis court. So that constitutes site coverage because it's not a clay court. So they are requesting a variance this evening from the site coverage requirement to legitimize the tennis court, which constitutes a significant value to the property and is of interest to them because they obviously are tennis buff, so they wouldn't have purchased the property. Then, in addition to the request for the variance, they also are seeking to renovate the existing dwelling, significant interior renovations, and they would like to have a bedroom, a bath, and a closet above the existing garage. They do have the septic capacity for that with the existing septic system. And the habitable space over the garage would require a special permit under the Gale case because the garage is 10.2 feet from the northerly lot line, and they'd be creating habitable space above that within the 20-foot current required setback. So that would be in a classic Gale case situation to put habitable, create habitable space above the garage. So along those lines, they would argue that this intensification of the existing non-conformity of 10.2 feet concerning the garage by creating habitable space above it would meet the requirements of the Gale case and the special permit, because it would not create a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, or the like, and would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. But that's their argument as far as the, the garage and creating habitable space over the garage. As far as the tennis court is concerned, I believe they meet, besides pulling at your heartstrings, I believe they legitimately meet the requirements of, of the statute, because they have a unique structure on the property. The statute talks about unique soil conditions, topography, shape of the lot, or the structures on the lot. And they happen to have a tennis court there that has been there for 20 years. That create, to remove that would constitute a, create a financial hardship for them. Number one, it would cost money to remove it. Number two, since they love to play tennis, it creates a hardship for them if they can't play tennis on the property that they paid considerable money for. And their contention is that a variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, because this is an existing, single-family residence with a tennis court there for 20 years. It would remain a single-family residence with a tennis court. Nothing would change in the neighborhood. No, none of the butters have objected to the existence of the tennis court, to the best of my client's knowledge, and it would allow them to legitimize what they unknowingly found to be a bastard tennis court. We ask that you grant the variance this evening.
Okay, Mr. Murphy.
Just to be clear. Cover the bases, to have this board grant the variance so that he can move forward with issuance of the building permit. My clients thought they were going to be able to do this this summer, and it's really piled up their whole summer. But since that situation exists and it's 49.7% coverage, site coverage, they would need a variance. There is, in 48, there's a provision that says, once a situation has existed for over 10 years, that it's no longer enforceable anyway. That if the town said, you have to get rid of that tennis court, I think my clients could, under 48, say, it's been there and nobody's done anything about it for 10 years, and it's now something that's unenforceable. But I think the easier path is to come to this board and ask for a variance.
There's not any additional detriment to the site coverage, the, the, the neighborhood, anything by any of the changes here. So I don't have any, any questions. It seems reasonable to me to go forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question, past history, was there ever a building permit to take about the build a tennis courts that the town approved 20 years ago?
We think it's more than 20 years ago, Mr. Sullivan. The answer is I don't know. And back then, I've been practicing long enough that it wasn't something, they didn't keep good records. They just didn't really bother with those types of things.
So it was a clay area, there wouldn't be a variance?
If it was.
You said it was a clay court, a variance would not be needed?
The variance is needed because of this definition of site coverage.
I realize that, but you mentioned it was a clay, it was a clay tennis court, it'd be fine.
I, I believe that that would be the case. They don't, they, they kind of like what's there now.
Okay, so they don't, they don't want to cover it with fixtures of the clay, so that's okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Donahue.
The garage currently has a window in it. Is that just storage space up there currently?
I have to, I believe Mr. Donahue, Mr. and Mrs. Gallagher, in his former life, was a detective, so he notices things like this. So I don't know. Maybe you folks could answer that.
Yes, it's just storage. There was, there's actually three windows in it currently, and the original owners had put a skylight, but it leaked and they closed it back up.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong.
But he does do his homework every time.
I, I was just curious, Mr. Kroll, did you, did you say that the test court, since it's cement?
it's cement, is considered a structure?
It's not, the fence enclosure would be considered a structure, but the court itself, it's not a structure because it's not an assembly of materials designed to give shelter or support. But it's site coverage because it prevents rainwater from leaching into the water table.
I see. That helps. Thank you. No other questions?
Yeah, I don't have any comments or questions. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this petition? No? Hearing no one, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Could I have a second, please, Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I did want to point out, I'm sorry to interrupt, I did want to point out that I did submit to Shayla this, earlier this week, a plan, I think she got it to all of you, that shows a dormer. Did that happen, Shayla?
Yes, I sent out revised plans.
That one page-
To the building.
Right, that shows a dormer on the garage. And they would like that page of that plan included in the decision this evening as one of the stamped plans as opposed to the page two that was submitted originally.
Okay, I'll make a motion in case 2020-26 that Timothy D. Gallagher and Claire M. Gallagher be granted a variance to allow for a pre-existing nonconformity concerning site coverage and a special permit to create habitable space over an existing garage of a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, and 325-54 is set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Sections 10 and 6. The property is located at 51 Monomoy Road, Map 5, Parcel K1-A16, in the RH1 zoning district, with the condition that there shall be no demolition, substantial exterior construction, or substantial new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. I have a second on that motion of Mr. Sullivan. Thinking from Brian Sullivan. Discussion by the board. I think it's, this is kind of a unique situation, but we do have the tennis court that's been in there, in the ground for quite a while. I think it does constitute a structure under Section 10. And whether or not it does under the bylaw, that's, I guess, subject to interpretation. I think the definition of structure is so loose, we can say it meets the definition under the bylaw, too. So I do think they meet the requirements for a variance here. And certainly, under the Gale case, they meet the requirements for a special permit to do the addition over the garage. It's not going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity, and it will not create any new nonconformity. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think removing an existing structure-
Chris, did you have something?
Yeah, I just said, I think, I think removing an existing structure just to try to get it inside the site coverage area would certainly be a financial hardship. So it clearly meets that for variance. So I would have to agree with your rationale on that, Dave.
Okay, good comment. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous. So the special permit and the variance are granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of, you never know what to expect in my profession, with the 4K petitions this evening, this is the one where I expected maybe some difficulty. I didn't expect on the other two. So you just never know.
Well, we hope everyone happy to discuss those problems.
I didn't expect to get frozen out for half an hour either. So I apologize to the Gallaghers for making them have to wait so long.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Croll, before you go, I have to tell you, I was never an athlete, but my dad was quite a ball player back in Danbury, Connecticut in the 30s. And he hit a ball on a Sing Sing prison. Now, he wasn't a prisoner, but back then, the local teams would go play the prisoners in Sing Sing over in Austin, New York. And he said, these guys, because they played six, eight hours a day, were real, really good ball players. He said there were no shortage of volunteers to go get the ball either.
They have a captive audience?
Sing Sing is still there. I don't know if they still play ball, but it's still there in Austin.
They'll have a captive audience, I take it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Board members, stay on for a minute, please.
If I can figure out how to leave, I will leave.
I've said that before.
I don't want to hang everybody up. But, okay, after the last meeting, we talked about reorganizing, but we never had a vote on it. So, Mr., we only have two other permanent members here, regular members, I guess we call them. Al, Jamie, do either of you guys want to be chairman or clerk?
No, I think I actually nominated you last time, and I maintain that nomination.
All right. And I'll nominate Jim Hilliard. He's willing to be clerk. So with that, I guess I'll make a motion that I'll be chairman for another year. Jim will be clerk for another year. We have a second to that. Second, Mr. Armstrong, all in favor? Aye. But one of these years, I'd like to have somebody else do it, and I think Jim would, too. So it's not, it's a minor nuisance. Okay, the minutes from the last meeting, I did ask Shayla to make two changes. One was on the mini golf case. We went back and forth over my conditions with Attorney Singer. He wrote the decision, and we finally got them agreed to. What I wanted Shayla to do was take, delete the conditions that are in the minutes, and just duplicate the exact ones that were in the decision so the two track. Because this one, we still don't know if there might be litigation. So I want to just make sure-
I'll do that, by the way. I already did. And I did the changes that you requested in the April, the two meetings from April and the meeting from May, and those have been just today sent to be incorporated into the website.
Okay, good. Thank you. The only other change was, I think, substantial needed to be added in front of new landscaping, I think. So that's a minor change.
And I did that, too.
So with those, these changes, if everybody's in agreement, I'll move that we accept the minutes, as I just described them changed, of our June 24, 2020 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I need a second, a second on that motion?
Seconded out of the one, yeah.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Murphy. It's getting late. We're all running down here. And in cases, I'm not sure now what I did and what I didn't, but 2020-24, 2020-25, 2020-26, I offered the rise, Ms. Delaney, to stamp all the documents in and sign the decisions on behalf of the board. Normally, I go in and do that, but with the COVID and Talon Hall closed, we're having Shayla do all of that because otherwise it would be logistically possible, but certainly not desirable, and just a real hassle. So I think that's just easier. And I think under the governor's orders, in the town orders on restriction and being safe, that's fine.
Could I say one thing, too? I have a deadline tomorrow for the next meeting. I'm pretty sure we're going to have five cases. So it won't be this big, but five cases instead of eight.
I guess with this shutdown and virus and everything else, people are wanting to expand their properties or houses. Can you believe how many people are here? I've never seen so many people on Cape Cod. It's incredible.
The new restriction in Harwich Port is that you have to wear a mask from Lower County Road to Bank Street if you're going to be walking in that area or potentially suffer a fine.
Well, a lot of people I saw yesterday didn't have masks on. They need to get out fighting them. The town needs the revenue, actually. That would be a great thing. Maybe we should all get deputized.
Hey, Dave, I have a question for you before we depart. On 2025, my plot plan, unless I didn't take everything down, did not reflect the garage. Does anybody else have it on their plot plan?
I'm sorry, let me, one was 2025 now. Was that the one where they were complaining about the room?
Yes, yes.
I just had a garage. It didn't, it just said garage.
Yeah, my plot plan said a garage also, didn't it?
You did have it?
Yeah, I had garage.
Okay.
About the bedroom, and now whether there is or there isn't, how do we know? Let the neighbors, if they're-
Again, I'll remind everybody that when, when this finally has to come in as a building permit application, it goes through all the departments. It'll be reviewed by Conservation, Planning, the Health Department, Fire Department, and then Building. We don't get it in the Building Department until everybody else goes through what they require. So if there's a problem with the bedroom count and the septic system, it won't get passed.
Yeah, they can't get an occupancy permit without an inspection from all those departments.
Correct. I mean, the building permit would include a variety of inspections along the way. So, you know, unless they do something to put up some sort of camouflage.
Are we able to, can the board report to the Board of Health that we discovered during the meeting that there was a bedroom over the garage, and are they aware of it? Can we alert them to that?
Well, we didn't discover it.
That's true. Well, it was through testimony.
Right. So Mr. Meyer said that is his job to-
Yeah. It's hearsay, and I'm not going forward on it. That's why I kept saying to these people, if they have an issue, they need to go to the Board of Health, not us. We don't, we don't know what's going on, and nor do I want to get our board involved. That's, they've got an issue, they've got an issue. Go talk to the Board of Health.
Right answer.
The plan does show that the garage is hooked up to the septic system.
It could have a bathroom.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And whether they'll go or not, I don't know. Shayla, the problem I had tonight, when I tried to call in, it wanted me to, it wanted to know if I was, I don't know, the originator or some doggone thing. And I thought initially I was, but then it asked me for an originator PIN code, which I did not have. The only PIN code I had was one for audio, which it wouldn't accept.
Let's check with Mary next time, like, two or three days before, to make sure that the codes are all going to work to get you in. Mary Mislowsky?
This was the last one she sent us on July 23. And then when I came into the, got back into here and clicked on Settings, they had a different phone number, a different access code, and a different audio PIN than the one Mary sent me. And that's where I finally got in.
Really? Okay. So again, I think, I think you should have a conversation with her about this and tell her how difficult it is. If something changes, you need to know.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I ask you one question?
Sorry.
On my screen, I have who is talking. There's a block up there. When we originally started the meeting, I couldn't see James. I couldn't see Chris for a while. And I haven't figured out how to eliminate that block, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I'm not so good at telling you because I can't, you know, you can't do that remote access.
Don't worry, don't worry about it. We'll figure it out.
Al, you might have Chris figure it out.
You might be lucky to be able to see.
We also had another thing. Throughout the last 45 minutes of the meeting, there was someone typing a message saying that he couldn't get in. It was one of the builders in one of these cases. And it was a quick, I looked up and I saw something on the screen, a tiny little print, somebody was trying to get in. Did anybody else see that?
Yes, it's in the chat section.
The chat, I just, yeah. I just opened it up now, and it, there's a fellow, he had the same problem I did. The access code on the website was not working. And that was the one I tried, too, off of our agenda.
Well, I see.
Mary gave me work. This is a system, I'm telling you, it really is not a good system.
I wonder if we could get an email a couple of days before the meeting with the link, so that we don't run into that problem in the future.
I will. Yeah, but it changed apparently. He had it on-
My link worked fine. I just clicked on it and brought me right in. Came on, I think it was July 1 that email came in.
I don't know. I have trouble every single time. I don't know why. I guess it just doesn't like me.
Al? Are you on a PC?
What's that?
I'm asking Al whether he's on a PC. Are you on a computer?
Yes.
Above, right above the top of the screen, there should be two arrows, one up, one down. Mine says, everybody, yours might say, who's talking?
Yes, it does.
You can also click everyone to see us all.
You see everyone who's talking, active camera, hide everyone.
All right. I just got rid of it. Thank you.
No problem. I didn't know what it was, just came up. I moved around my cursor to finally figure it out.
I took myself right out the screen.
Okay, well, thanks very much. We'll do it again next month. It was so much fun. Have a good one. Stay well. Be careful. Wear the mask.
Dave, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yeah. Okay, Mr. Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at whatever it is, 9:58 PM. Thanks, Shayla. Thanks to all. See you next month. Bye-bye. I'm going to end the meeting for us.